I'm one. All meeting order, record members present and absent.
Ellis.
Here.
Durham absent. Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Here.
Kane?
Here!
I'm two. Read the open meeting compliance statement.
Hi, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School Districts, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma. Certified that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certified that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of this meeting.
I'm three. Consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of a discussion, consideration, and approval of three dash one addition of items in new business.
Head.
Nine. Three, two. Minutes of the June twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen regular board meeting. Three, three. Approval of the treasurer's report on the status of funds and investments. Three, four. Approval of activity fund report. Three, five. Approval of booster club sanctioning request. And three, six. Approval of activity fundraisers.
I didn't see any corrections in the minutes. Did anybody else? Pretty short meeting, so... Treasurer's report. You can see the investments. Really good shape there. Total of all the investments, eleven million, oh nine seven, six oh nine thirty-one. So... Investments in the senior achievement, two hundred fifteen thousand. So, investments are good. Treasurer's report. You can go down and you can see the beginning balance of cash on hand. And again, total monies, we're looking about eight million, eight, is that eight or six? Six twenty, one forty-three. Not sure what our total carryover in general fund, but it will be close to probably six point five. So, again, we're in good shape in our carryover money. Any questions on any of the investments? Activity fund? You can see that there is money in the activity funds, pretty good balance in all of them. Just to deal off the cuff, I had some, people wanted to organize, they bring school supplies and put it on the bus like they used to. And I told them at this point in time, I didn't think we need to because all of our activity funds were in good shape and kids needed anything, schools could get it. And we also usually get some donations from the church for that specific thing. So, I told them at this time, I didn't think that we really needed anything.
Question?
Yes.
On activity, only because of the auditor, he made reference, I don't know, two, three months ago about this coming school year, making sure we do a better job and not leaving money in a desk drawer. I mean, so is that something we'll address, I mean, with the next school year coming out? Okay.
That's, yeah. We will address that. And we also are changing a little bit, and we're going to have two signatures on this money receipts and everything coming in this year. And so, yes, we are going to follow those.
Now's the time to do it, I guess, if we're going to...
It's good for...
It's easy to do, to throw in your desk drawer, and then all of a sudden you're thinking, oh crud, I got to get rid of this.
And we will, I will sit down with a couple to make sure that that is correct.
Thank you.
And I've already talked to one of them.
Certainly.
Approval booster club, Memphis School Booster Club, life ago. Of course, we sank some dead for many years. Everything's in order. They filled out the proper paper, thank you, work. I was kind of surprised to see how much money the booster club had in it. Looked like to me, what, nineteen thousand?
Yep, nineteen oh six.
So, they're in pretty good shape.
That's great.
And I don't know if you went through all fundraisers, but I did not see any fundraiser that we haven't been doing in the past.
How many were, seven, eight, or something?
Ah, there were a lot of them that I didn't count. But I didn't, I didn't see anything out of order or anything or any new from my memory, which is not the investment world, but it's still pretty good. So... Unless you have any questions, I would recommend to the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we expect all the booster clubs have their sanctioning requests in before school starts, or are we into that? How do we ensure that we have our...
Well, we'll get on the phone and call. And if they don't, I guess we just have to tell them that we're not going to recognize you this year if you don't get them by the August board meeting. That's what we usually do. Good questions?
I make a motion that we accept three, one, oh, I'm sorry, you have a question. Three, one, three, two, three, 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 four, three, five.
Second. Sorry. I'm sorry. Second. Ellis, we need to add three, six. Did you say three, six?
Oh, if I didn't, I'd thank you. Three, six.
Full consent agenda.
Thank you.
Ellis?
Hi.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
I'm four. Vote to, vote to approve or not to approve the purchase order encircuses for the following funds, grant by eighteen, listed four, one, four, two, four, three, and four, four.
On the encircers register, you'll see some big items there, and they are for open POs for the year. And again, purchase order number seven is the apple. We have one last payment on that, so that's the lease purchase on those computers at that point in time. And then, ten, that's the cost for auditing, Charles and the Carol Associates. City of Alba, thirty thousand for all utilities. Our SO officer, number twelve, that's for, actually going to have two this year. We're going to have more hours and so forth, so we're going to have better coverage, so we'll have... Those officers down in the elementary, a little bit more than what they've been in the past. And then, purchase order thirteen, Clearwater Enterprises, that is our gas at the high school. We contracted to, okay? And then, we've got money encumbered for PTs and OTs. Index of Oklahoma, purchase order eighteens for district fire alarm monitoring. Farm plan is for our purchases at Co-op Garnett Fuel, Janet Hickman OT Services. Twenty-nine, just an open PO for Merrifield. Thirty-sevens are leased at Northwestern. Office Solutions. Thirty-eight is for district cleaning supplies. OG and E Utilities, seventy-five thousand. OEG, thirty thousand. Purchase order fifty-three, from the school insurance group, that's our property vehicle insurance, a hundred twenty-five. I don't think that's been raised for a couple of years, has it, Terry? Think it's been staying right around there, so we're fortunate. Oh, yeah. When we got the building, that did go up. And our school board association, those fees there. Ross Transportation, we just picked up three of the new buses today that we've leased, so we've got three, we've got two more to come in. And then, Woods County Treasurer, seventy-two, for eighty-two thousand. And the one that shocks me each and every year is seventy-three. Substitutes, a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the school. And honestly, that may not be enough because, you know, we never know what kind of illness we're going to have and so forth. So, you know, non-fair relief total, almost a million dollars.
Is that your projection for the whole year or just through December?
Pretty much for the whole year. And the next one is all encircers for all the salaries. And you can see the salaries. And included dad...
I'm sorry, they, somebody hit my water line, I gotta go shut it off. I don't have any paid call, so...
That's fine.
All right. Congratulations.
Don't look at me, I'm a good kid on the block.
So, those are all the salaries of the workers and so forth. And you can see that the total for the school district at this point in time, seven point two million dollars. Now, that's fifty-seven percent of our appropriation budget at this time. And again, we didn't get a full appropriation, so we're probably at seventy-five percent at this point in time. And when we do the district appropriation for the year, it'll probably be closer to eighty-five to ninety percent of our total available monies to us. Does that make sense? And those are a little bit misleading, some of those, because they have insurance, they have teacher retirement, they have off-line. That's not a true salary schedule for those people, okay? Any questions on the general fund side? Building fund? Again, open POs for Goodrich, for plumbing, for West Electric, for our lumber, Jenkins Supplies Supplies. So, these are pretty much just open POs that we take down there. Now, again, an open PO, these people have to write a purchase order each and every time that they get something, and they have to be okay. And then we just deduct it from that PO. They just don't have the card blank to go down there. They still have to go through the process on the open POs. And then trial attrition. Against open POs for those. Now, checking with our organization that we co-op with, in August, we're going to probably bring a procurement documentation that will allow us to buy all of this from this co-op, and we won't have to bid the milk in a bread house, which is senseless because this co-op's going to sell us highly anyway, and that's the only people that sell us.
As I say, that's what you have anyway.
Yeah, okay. So, we will okay our procurement document in August on that, and we won't have the bidding that we've had in the past. Gifted fund? Again, share trust and also Lisbon Foundation gave us a third for the apples, so that's reflected there. And then the rest of them for scholarship for students. And the purchase order number eight, LED lighting for Alba High School stage, that was donated by share trust. And also, number nine, and boss music, also number ten. So, eight, nine, and ten are all coming out of a share trust gift to the school for specifically sound lighting at the high school auditorium.
That's bad news. Much needed.
And maybe Mr. Martin will be happy.
Yeah, every year I can find him, get my phone and get videos.
You know, it's that one black, that one dark spot in there, right on the stage.
You know, right before we had the last conference, we had a major flood that went out. And that one person was dark, that whole left side of door. So, these are all going to be LEDs.
Yeah, that's what they all go.
Surround systems, so we can hear better and so forth. So, unless you have any specific questions, those are what we've been covering for next year, pretty much the same as always. And I would recommend to the board that we approve order, purchase order encircuses for the following for FY eighteen.
I would make that motion to approve purchase order encircuses four, one through, four, four.
A second motion.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
People, it's just willing to help, bless their heart.
Wrap this right up.
Okay, we have a retirement letter, well, resignation, excuse me.
She's...
Kind of. Again, Kylie Slater's going to the career tech to teach, verbally committed to Bruce Sackett, losing her aline about four fifteen today. And so, she will be on a one-year contract.
She related to all the rest of Sackets in the woods?
Gary Sackett's wives, Billy Sackett's sister-in-law and all that.
What's her first name?
Ruth.
Ruth. A lot of it, Bruce.
So, she will be on a one-year contract, visit with her, tell her that possibly open it up in the spring, just like we have in the past, Ruth. The other reassignment is Shannon Drew is going from third grade back to middle school to teach language arts for the absence of Zaire, Betty Zaire. Okay? Okay, communications. You've got a letter that we got from Roy Easley about three thirty, no, two fifty-nine, excuse me. Kind of explains what's happening on that on the indoor facility. We still have to meet because you can see the, push the time back now to the last July, first week of August. Well, we have July ninth in our contract. So, I'm sure Rick Scott Construction's going to try and get out of those fines and so forth. And I talked to Roy, I said, Roy, I don't know whose fault it is or whatever, but we're not interested. So, if we have to have a meeting, we'll have a meeting, but we're not just going to give it to them. So, that's kind of where we're at there. I think all of the, I keep saying that air and heat and all that will be completed shortly, should be completed next week.
Next week, you said?
Next week. Okay? I talked to them, and so he assured me of that. The other things that we are having are enrollment or pre-enrollment, whatever you want to call it. And it will be for all of schools, July the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh. It will be at the Alba Middle School from nine to one. So, one family can come in and enroll their children at five different schools if they want to. Okay?
So, on our webpage, we have Alba High School enrollment happening on just the something. That's incorrect.
That's my next one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We are in the middle of changing our website, and that will all be corrected and be on there correct. Hopefully, the app and everything will be up and running next week according to my notes. So, yes.
Okay, so if Alba High's going to do pre-enrollment at the middle school, nine to one on July twenty-fifth, that's where I need to be?
Yes.
Gotcha. Is this for me to keep?
Yes. Now, Karen, when they talk to you, they may have had at their place because they were going to do it differently, and then we said, no, we're going to do it together.
Well, and this was like a week or two ago. I, I'm on vacation, I said, when are you going to do it pre? Because usually it's August first to second when I will be at my teachers' meetings, and I miss them. And they said, no, we're going to wait. And so I was happy about that, so this is fun.
So, everybody be at the middle school.
Okay, that's exciting. Okay, fabulous.
All right.
Can we go back on the building just a little bit?
Sure.
I mean, what has been the issue? What has been the delay issues?
The one issue has been a little bit of the rain, and then they fired a concrete guy. So, they just now hired a new concrete company there, trying to get them here next week. You talk to subcontractors, and they say that they haven't gotten the okay on their materials to be ordered. And then, when they do get it, then they have to wait in line to get their materials ordered because they order them out of lock supply or something out of Palm City, let's say. So, they've got to wait to get all that stuff, and then they get that stuff and they get it done.
So, is that they're waiting on approval from Mr. Easley?
Yes, that's what they tell me. Easley says no.
Who, who's providing oversight on a day-to-day basis of that building?
Kyle, what's his name, Reynolds? He's the contractor for register. And I'm in touch with him about every other day, or at least by the total. And he comes in and tells me that some of it is Easley, but I don't know who to believe to be Reynolds. Yes, Kyle Reynolds.
Will this facility be in place for school to start? Will it be ready to go?
Yes.
I mean, we went into that with many assumptions, that it would be completed and be handled, and I just don't want us to lose sight of that, that this is not what we signed up for, and who's, who's responsible for that?
The architect's responsible for completion and making sure. And I've been in contact with him, and I've been in contact with Colin. I know Coach has been up there almost every day. I've been up there every day, trying to check and see, or most every day and so forth, so...
Do they visit with you?
Coach is there.
When I talked to the foreman from Sky, he said, well, we're waiting on this to get in here. We're waiting on the color to be okay. The color was okayed on the floor tile in the bathrooms four weeks ago. Ceiling crew can't come in and put the ceiling in until all the air and heat. They have made a change, order on a little bit, which is going to be a lot better. There were some air vents in the hallway, about three of them. They're going to take those out and make them flat. So, some of that. But the biggest thing, I think, has been the concrete work and so forth, and they fired the original concrete construction company, and they hired this new one. So, that's what I then told them.
We just need to ensure that we have the oversight on that and make that happen. That, that's what we signed up for.
And that's Roy Easley. That's why we're paying him, and that's why I visit with him. Any other things? I had most, most communications last week, so I really don't have any more.
Can I ask a question? How's it going to take to get that digital sign accurate at the south and north of the high school? It looks bad.
Yeah, well, then, I think it's part of that electrical burst that we have that we're replacing it. After we get those replaced with new, I don't know if the motherboard is going to be okay or all of its needs is going to be programmed. But Mark Carroll knows about it, and so we're kind of waiting on that. I think they're going to do that next week also.
I just hate to see us looking...
I do too.
Yeah.
You're right. It needs to be shut off.
Say your electricity.
Yeah, if it's, if it's bad information. I drove by the other day, and it said, I don't know, screw break or something.
May seventeenth.
Something, anyway, I thought, you know, I, yeah.
Well, it just came on automatically after one of those bursts, because we've had it turned off. It, it may be.
Do you see ghosts are coming down the business?
It may be. Any other communications questions?
Six point one, item or discussion with fiscal board action, vote to approve the Alba High School, Alba Middle School, and Alba Middle School, or Alba Elementary School's student handbook for fiscal year eighteen.
The only questions that I've heard from any board members is, Karen had a question, and it's on the high school handbook, page eighteen. And it's about career tech students and X-ing out tenth graders.
X-ing out, that sounds terrible. I'm having that with fifth graders.
Crossing out tenth graders and only eleventh and twelfth graders. The reason they thought that they needed to do that, because as a sophomore, if they went out there, that career tech didn't have a full complement of classes for a student to take, three years of a three-hour block or whatever. Well, I called Mr. Slater and I talked to Karen. That's not really true, but they had some kids that had difficulty, so, and like Mr. Slater and I visited, any time a student goes to career tech, I don't care if it's a sophomore, junior, or senior, they have to fill out an application, counselor, and principal meet together. So, it's communication. So, I'm going to recommend to Mr. Potter to allow that tenth grader to be back in there because it's taken on a, on an individual basis anyway. So, we will take that, put it back into the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade because I know that we'll have some tenth graders that want to go out there because if they're interested in a, especially in accounting or some, something that, we don't teach that. Now, I understand they want juniors and seniors in their auto mechanics and their auto collision and so forth, but we've since sophomores out there for a long time.
Sure have. And I will say, when I asked, I spent all last year working with eighth graders, and the whole idea was for them to take some ownership in their career planning for high school curriculum. And that being, if they want to do the bio math at Northwest Tech, I mean, it takes planning. And I've told parents forever, we'd love to have your kid four years, my golly, but it's just not going to happen because it just takes, there's too many requirements for a kid to have, and it is an individual-based thing, yeah.
Well, it will be too because of the new eye cap.
That's right.
We will be utilizing and putting those career plans in.
That's exactly right. And that's a big...
That will be taken care of with communication and counseling and so forth. So, we can add that back. The other was on page twenty-eight, early graduation. They want to take out a bunch of that stuff up there, and basically what that means is the principal, counselor, and the parents will meet to approve that, because we've had early graduation.
So, what will, what would the verbiage be, do you know? Because right now it says, Alba High School does not typically allow this as an option.
We will change it that they will be allowed for early, but don't have to apply to applications and so forth. And, and to be real honest with you, everything in here is subject to review with the principal, counselor, and so forth, and things can be changed. But we will change those for sure.
Those are the two that...
Because they are little.
Well, they, they are, and I didn't want to, I didn't, I didn't understand that, and I didn't want it to come out and paint us in the corner so that we can't address a child's needs if we have somebody that wants to have an early...
I don't, I don't want that anymore.
So, thank you for clarifying that.
So, we'll, we'll rewrite that to where a child can apply for early graduation and principal, counselor, and parents will meet.
Sure, I like that.
Okay?
And those are the only two questions I had. And those are the only two questions I had, Tiffany and Larry, so.
Good catches.
Do you have any?
No.
Okay. Then with those two changes, and Karen, and when you make the motion, make the motion that those two be changed, please.
Are we ready to make a motion on that, Ms. Tisdine?
Unless you have any questions.
I didn't have anything on the middle school or elementary at all.
Okay.
Somebody, which an awful lot of work, Carrie, somebody, and highlighted that, it was very helpful.
Certainly.
Thank you, that was very helpful. So tell them that was, I don't know that I've read a handbook that thoroughly, that didn't belong to my personal school, so. Then I would make the motion to accept the handbook changes, with the exception of Career Tech attendance by sophomores to be included, and early exit policy.
Graduation.
Graduation to be reviewed by a team of educational experts, or however you want to word that, I don't know. The principal, counselor, and parents to be part of the communication, yeah? Part of it, yes.
Student may apply for early graduation with principal and counselor.
So we're leaving the wording that the tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade students can attend Northwest Technology Center.
Yes, 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 yes.
And also allowing early graduation with approval of counselor and principal.
And parents, we want parents involved.
Yeah, parents, we want parents.
I want them to be part of it.
Counselor and principal and parents.
Does that make sense? Thank you.
Kane.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six point two, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the extra duty salary schedule for fiscal year eighteen.
Last month, you all were presented this, the committee looked at this and made these recommendations as the following salary schedule. And I have no problems with them, and I've recommended to the board that they be approved for seventeen, eighteen. It's probably not the best.
Larry and I, I'll let you make that motion.
Make the motion that we approve six two.
Six two. I'll second that.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the extra duty assignments for fiscal year eighteen.
And again, the committee and principals and everybody have looked at these, and these are the ones that we have now. We may have changes, because we need an assistant softball, we need an assistant girls' basketball, and I'm not, I can't even remember, I've read this many times. Does he have his junior sponsors on there yet? I don't think he does. But these are the ones that we know of at this point in time, and I would recommend to the board that they be approved also, because committee has looked at this and approved them in their committee report.
I'd make the motion to accept the extra duty assignments for fiscal year eighteen in six point three.
Kane.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six point four, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the administrative salary schedule for fiscal year eighteen.
And that is our administrative salary schedule and how it is figured, and it is the same as last year, so there are no changes on that. And so I would recommend to the board that we approve the administrative salary schedule as presented.
Make the motion to approve extra duty.
Administrative salary. Six point four, Larry.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Kane.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six point five, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a contract with North West Technology Center for clinical rotations for fiscal year eighteen.
And we've been in joint partnership, how many years, Karen?
Oh, gosh, it's LPN, this is our fourth last, I think.
I think so.
They wrap up in October.
They come in and do a lot of good things for our kids and present safety and health issues, and I would recommend to the board that we continue this clinical rotation with Career Tech.
I'd make the motion that we accept that, six point five.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
New business was done, signing of documents approved by earlier action.